We will call this meeting to order at four o'clock. The NVUSD Board of Education is holding a regular board meeting tonight, and we invite participation either remotely or in person. Decisions on how to participate via Zoom are available at nvusd.org/board. The open session part of the meeting will begin around 7:00 PM tonight. Before going into closed session, the board is available for public comment on closed session agenda items. Mr. Michaels, do we have any public comment on closed session agenda items?
There is no public comment on closed session items.
Seeing that there is none, the board will now adjourn into closed session. All right, we are reconvening to open session at 7:20. Good evening, my name is David T. Gracia, and this is the Napa Valley Unified School District Board of Education. The NVUSD Board of Education is holding a regular board meeting tonight, and we invite participation either remotely or in person. Directions on how to participate via Zoom are available at nvusd.org/board. Interpretation in Spanish is available for tonight's virtual board meeting. Our interpreters are Asidra Menkos and Francisco Mesa. One of our interpreters will now translate the directions on our English channel so our Spanish-speaking families can hear the instructions.
Si, muy buenas tardes a todos y bienvenidos a la punta de la educación escolar, del distrito escolar de Napa Valley. Esta noche vamos a tener interpretación al inglés a español, de inglés a español. Pedimos que por favor vayan abajo en sus pantallas de su computadora y vean o busquen el símbolo de un globo terráqueo y elijan su idioma de preferencia, en este caso sería español. Si gustan solo escuchar a los intérpretes sino al audio original, vayan donde dice mute original audio, o silenciar el audio original, y escogen español. En sus teléfonos móviles o sus otros dispositivos como un iPad, vayan y busquen unos puntitos, tres puntitos suavemente, donde dice interpretación y elijan su idioma, en este caso también español. Y lo mismo si solamente gustan oír a los intérpretes, háganle clic donde dice mute original audio. Muchas gracias y pues que disfruten de esta reunión, gracias.
Thank you. Can we please start with an attendance roll call from Vera Morales, Executive Assistant?
Yes, Student Board Member Gomez?
Present.
Trustee Gracia?
Present.
Trustee Water?
Present.
Trustee Riser is absent tonight. Trustee Shoe?
Present.
Trustee Jankowicz?
Present.
Trustee Hart?
Present.
Trustee Gonzales Maris?
Present.
Foreign present, thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Water, do you have a report on closed session items?
Yes, I do, Mr. President. D1 student discipline. D1A expulsion. The board recommends for the expulsion of student 03232023A.
Move to approve.
I'll second.
First by trustee two, second by trustee Gonzalez Morris. Vera, can we have a roll call vote on this one?
Yes, trustee Gracia?
Aye.
Trustee Water?
Aye.
Trustee Shoe?
Aye.
Trustee Jankowicz?
Aye.
Trustee Hart?
Aye.
Trustee Gonzales Maris?
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you.
Thank you.
And D1B readmitted expulsions. The board recommends for the readmitted expulsion of student 11182021D.
Move to approve.
I'll second.
First by trustee two, second by trustee Gonzalez Morris. Ms. Morales, can I have a roll call vote on this item?
Yes, trustee Gracia?
Aye.
Trustee Water?
Aye.
Trustee Riser? Oh, sorry, trustee Shoe?
Aye.
Trustee Jankowicz?
Aye.
Trustee Hart?
Aye.
Trustee Gonzales Maris?
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you.
All right. And D2A personnel. In closed session, the board took action to approve the following staff recommendation effective the 2023-24 school year. Jen Cole to the position of Assistant Principal at Vintage High School.
Would Ms. Cole like to say a few words?
Hi, Ms. Cole. I see that you're online.
Hi there.
Hi, Ms. Cole.
Hi, Dr. Musetti. Hi, NVUSD Board. Thank you so much. I just wanted to jump on and really express my gratitude for your support and to really thank Assistant Superintendent Dana Page and Director Monica Reddy in helping support my transition over to Vintage for next year. I think that it's really important that we continue to learn and grow in our professional lives. And I've been in NVUSD for 25 years. And so I'm really just still excited about the work and just thrilled to be a school site administrator. So thank you so much for the appointment this evening.
You're welcome.
Yeah, congratulations, Ms. Cole. Thank you for all of your work at Silverado, and we're very, very excited about the new opportunity that you're leaning into. And we know you'll do great work at Vintage High next year, working with Principal Hutchinson and her team. So thanks, thank you for taking on the new venture.
Yes, thank you so much for all your support. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Okay, and to continue, and congratulations, Ms. Cole. The board directed legal counsel to initiate or intervene in illegal action. The action, the defendants and the other particulars will be disclosed to any person upon inquiry unless to do so would jeopardize the district's ability to effectuate service of process on one or more unserved parties or that to do so would jeopardize the district's ability to conclude existing settlement negotiations to its advantage. Approval was unanimous. And the board, again, the board directed legal counsel to initiate or intervene in another legal action. The action, the defendants and the other particulars will be disclosed to any person upon inquiry unless to do so would jeopardize the district's ability to effectuate service of process on one or more unserved parties or that to do so would jeopardize the district's ability to conclude existing settlement negotiations to its advantage. Approval was unanimous. And that concludes my report from closed session.
Thank you, trustee water. All right, item E2, flag salute. Would trustee Jankowicz lead us in flag salute tonight?
With the allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, physical liberty and justice.
All right. Item E3, this meeting is live streamed and recorded via Zoom and will be archived on the district YouTube channel. For a detailed review of any meeting agenda item, the archived video can be referenced on the district's webpage at nvusd.org. The process for public comment can also be found on the district's webpage. Item E4, approval of the agenda.
Move to approve.
Second.
First by trustee two, a second by trustee Hart. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. E5, approval of minutes, E5A, March 9, 2023.
Move to approve.
Second.
First by trustee two, second by trustee Hart, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. E5B, March 15, 2023.
Move to approve.
Second.
First by trustee two, second by trustee Hart, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. E6, recognition of visitors and employee organizations. Dr. Musetti, do we have any visitors in attendance?
Let's get a message. This evening, I do want to recognize that Ms. Leslie Walder, the president of NAPS, was here, but she just messaged me that she's having connectivity issues and she will not be able to address the board. But thank you, Ms. Walder, for being present this evening.
Is that it? All right, then we will move on to recognition of students of the month. F1 Vintage High School. Will Principal Hutchinson please present the students of the month for Vintage?
Good evening, Dr. Musetti and members of the board. I want to thank you for this opportunity to recognize our Vintage High School seniors. First, I will speak about Emmanuel Hurtado Quiros. Emmanuel is a Vintage High School senior. He is organized, driven, and a hard worker, and his work ethic has helped him maintain an overall grade point average of 3.46 throughout high school while taking honors classes. Emmanuel has been part of our Avid program for all four years with us, and he says that Avid has helped him be college-ready and also stay on top of all of his academics while playing soccer for our school team as well as a club team. And his avid peers nominated him to be Avid Student of the Month earlier in this fall, in our fall semester. And Emmanuel was also part of Avid for all three years of middle school. Emmanuel started playing soccer when he was four years old, and his passion and drive for the sport can be seen in the field as he plays. This year, the Vintage High School soccer team made it to the NorCal finals. It takes a village, and Emmanuel is proud to be a part of this program. As for his future, he's planning, he's looking forward to college. He'll be the first in his family to attend college, and he's thinking of majoring in business and is excited to start his college journey. And he does hope to continue to play soccer at the collegiate level as well. It's been a real pleasure for me to get to know Emmanuel this year. He is very kind, very caring, and certainly outgoing. And we have some interesting circumstances this evening in that Emmanuel is actually on a college field trip with our Avid program in Southern California. They are touring UCLA, UCLA right at this moment. So in order to make this work this evening, we made a video message with the help of Mr. Castillo, our media arts teacher. And I believe there's someone who will help play that now.
Hello, my name is Emmanuel Hurtado. I am a student athlete at Vintage High School. Firstly, I would like to thank NVUSD Board for giving an opportunity to represent VHS in this award and Dr. Musetti for acknowledging me. I would like to also thank my avid teacher, Mrs. Tula. Mrs. Tula has been an avid teacher all four years. We were in her first class for avid students. And even though in the beginning we had a bit of a rough start, I grew and matured enough to see that everything she was doing for us was to grow our organization, reading and readiness skills that would benefit our future. I'm super grateful for all that she has done for us and the avid family we have become. Coming back from virtual school was hard as it is, but thankfully, meeting Luanne Ayala made school feel a bit more normal. My friend group and I all love Luanne. She's our favorite staff at Vintage for a reason. She's super friendly, outgoing, and funny. I am grateful that I got to see her every day during breaks. I would also like to thank my vintage talk coach, Coach Javi. Thank you for giving me an opportunity to show my skills, passion for the sport. I'm glad I had to work extra hard to get a spot on the field. I'm also grateful for showing, for showing me that sometimes you have to work harder than others when competing for the same goals as others. I've been playing competitive soccer since I could run. When I moved clubs from Napa to Fairfield, I got to meet a new coach, Coach Mike. Coach Mike with my dad assisting him made a great duo. Very fast, we all got closer as a team and with my coach. Coach Mike has not only helped me grow as a player, but given me life lessons and has helped me with career choices by talking to me about some options. Last but not least, I need to give the greatest thanks and appreciation to my parents and sister who have supported me throughout my life with soccer and school. They are the reason I've become the person I am today, and they deserve the world for that. My favorite memory at Vintage is winning the state championship and getting a big old ring my junior year. As I finished my last semester at Vintage High School, I am ready to start college and keep on playing soccer at the collegiate level. I'm still looking at career choices, but I'm interested in business sales major. I plan on attending the Napa Valley College and transferring after two years and hope to keep playing soccer. Thank you for this time and this recognition.
Thank you. And I appreciate everybody's flexibility in making that work so that we could recognize Emmanuel this evening, and I hope they're all having a great time on their college tour.
That was great. Principal Hutchinson, thank you so much for ensuring that a video was produced since he couldn't be here. That was so wonderful. So thank you for taking that extra step and making that effort.
Absolutely. I think, I know his family is on and I believe everybody is logged on while they're touring and walking around in UCLA as well. The next student that I have the pleasure of introducing is Senior Peyton O'Hara, another wonderful senior at Vintage. Peyton is a graduating senior. She is kind, driven, outgoing, responsible, and a leader at our school. In her time at Vintage, she has been a part of student government all four years. And this year, she holds the position of ASV president, and her class and her peers and the school overall are really lucky to have her leadership. In addition, she's been a part of the choir program these past four years at Vintage, and she currently serves as treasurer for the choir program. Both student government and choir have made her time at Vintage memorable. Peyton also supports her community outside of Vintage High School with volunteering and community service. This fall, Peyton plans to attend college in Southern California, where she plans to major in sports management, and she would like to become a sports analyst and work for a professional sports team. And again, as a new principal, it's been a pleasure to get to know Peyton this year as we are in campus together, making morning announcements, seeing her organize and lead rallies and events, and also seeing her at various sporting events where she cheers on her school and her peers. Peyton is here this evening virtually.
Hi, thank you. First of all, I would like to thank Dr. Musetti and the board for this incredible honor and recognition. Secondly, I would like to thank my family that has supported me in all of my endeavors, no matter how little or how big they may be. I also want to recognize some teachers and staff who have been instrumental to my growth, success, and achievements over the years. Ms. Lamont, thank you for creating an environment that was fun to walk into every day and for helping me get through one of my toughest academic years yet. Coach Micah, thank you for making my last season of golf my most memorable. I know you'll miss having me as a passenger in your golf cart next season. Mr. Teeters, thank you for giving me the opportunity to perform my first musical and create lifetime memories and friendships through music. Mrs. Cavita, thank you for being like a second mom to me on campus and allowing me to work with your special education students. Mrs. Hurdell, my elementary school principal, thank you for being the ambitious, outgoing, and kind leader I have desired to be since I was a young girl. Finally, Mrs. Housley, thank you for pushing me and my leadership skills to new heights over the last four years. Thank you for always leading with your heart and being the prime example of the leader I aspire to be. As I go to college next year, I plan to major in sports management, where I hope to work with a professional sports team. I will carry all of my experiences and skills I have developed thus far with me as I leave Vintage and continue my education.
Thank you. All right, we'll move on then to item F2, Napa Valley Independent Studies. Will Principal Cisneros please present the students of the month for NVIS?
Good evening, Dr. Musetti and Board of Trustees. I just really quick, I want to thank the Board of Trustees that were able to attend our accreditation visit that we had earlier in the month. It was a great visit, positive feedback, and some great commendations and support for the work that we have ahead of us. So thank you for joining us. This evening is my pleasure to introduce to you Emma Keller. I have a little something to share with you from her teacher. I would like to recognize her for Napa Valley Independent Studies. As the student of the month, she was nominated by Mrs., by her teacher, Mrs. Farrell, for her work and consistency. A little background about NVIS students. Students in independent studies are expected to navigate their courses independently and keep up with the pace provided by their teacher on a weekly basis. It is difficult to think, it is, it's a difficult thing to master and compare, and is comparable to what a first-year college student must adjust to when they graduate high school. Oftentimes, we do not have a high school freshman standing before you because, to be honest, most high school freshmen oftentimes don't have the maturity or the responsibility level that Emma has. She is a meticulous student, showing great detail in her effort to master online content and learn the material with intention. Throughout her freshman year, she has met all deadlines and often works ahead of pace to complete her work in an accelerated manner. She will likely finish her freshman year of courses study early. The thing I like most about Emma is that she advocates for herself and comes to school prepared with all lists of questions for me to answer so that she has clarity for the upcoming week of work. Lastly, I learned so much from her as a teacher. I get to see her struggles in real time, and she can clearly articulate her concerns so that I can be prepared to help others who might encounter the same struggle. Students who make teachers, students who make teachers' jobs run smoothly should always be recognized. But all the kidding aside, it is her hard work and effort that is most commendable and deserves a round of applause and recognition today. So with that, I introduce you to Emma. So Emma, if you can unmute yourself and share a few words.
Hello, my name is Emma Keller, and I would like to thank the NVUSD School Board for recognizing my hard work as a freshman at NVIS. I am thankful for my parents who are always supporting me in my academic journey. Coming to the Independent Studies High School program from the Independent Studies Middle School program, I've had to work more independently than before. Mrs. Farrell, my independent studies high school teacher, and Mrs. Chris, my independent studies middle school teacher, have been very supportive and have helped me be successful in this program. I always make sure I am on pace in my subjects, and I have been able to manage my time for what works for me. I don't hesitate to get my work done, and I have been able to work ahead in some of the subjects. As a result of being able to work ahead of the pace, I have had time for other opportunities, which include taking care of my horse and volunteering my time at Spirit Horse in American Canyon. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next student is Sofia Rodriguez Solis. Her teacher says that she's an exceptional student who has consistently demonstrated outstanding academic performance throughout her time at NVIS. She's a natural leader who is always eager to lend a helping hand to her classmates and teachers. She has a passion for learning and consistently seeks out new challenges to further her knowledge, to further her knowledge and understanding. Sofia's dedication to her studies is evident in and out of the classroom. She takes advantage of various opportunities to better herself. In fact, she is in the process of applying for a summer internship to learn more about the hospitality industry. Sofia's exceptional academic and personal achievements are a testament of her hard work, determination, and commitment to excellence. She is a true inspiration to her peers and is a shining example of what it means to be a lifelong learner. Ladies and gentlemen, Ms. Sofia.
Hi, my name is Sofia. I want to take this opportunity to thank my mom, Sandra, who has provided immense support during my education, and thank the board, the Napa Valley Education Foundation, and especially my teacher, Ms. Corinzer, for taking the time to recognize me as the student of the month. I started my journey at Vishy Elementary, then moved on to River Middle School, and now at NVIS. One of my favorite classes is history. I like to learn about the past. Due to health issues, a traditional classroom setting didn't work for me. Thankfully, NVIS has given me the opportunity to succeed in my education. It has helped me grow in my independence and responsibility for my own success. I plan on attending NBC for my general education and transferring to a university. At this time, I have interest in studying crime, law, and business. I'm most proud of my independence that I have gained and a more positive outlook on where education could take me in life. Thank you again for this recognition. It means a lot to me.
Thank you.
Before, Ms. Cisneros, are you still there?
Ah, yes, I'm still here.
So congratulations to the students from Valley Oak. But I, since you're here, I'd just like to take a moment, a public moment, to congratulate you. Today, we receive, and felicidades, today we received the news that Principal Maria Cisneros has been named AXA Admin, State Administrator of the Year in the category of continuing education. So I want to recognize.
Thank you so much. And thank you for the opportunity to work here.
And we're not surprised.
Congratulations.
All right, moving on to G, public comments on non-agenda items. Trustee Water, did we receive any public comment on non-agenda items via email?
No public.
No public comments on non-agenda items were submitted via email before 8:00 AM this morning.
Right, we do have one speaker card, so I will call up, I'm gonna say Ricardo Guadino.
And to the public, today will be a surprise for you. Today is Napa's birthday. 150, well, it depends how you count it. But it's basically the 151st birthday of Napa. If you go a year back, was when they did the first constitutional draft. And then next year was when they reincorporated to change their status. It is totally an error in the way that the historical society and others have portrayed Napa's founding. Because the first mayor of Napa was a great model of a man of heart. And nobody knows his name. They don't know who the first mayor of Napa was. And it changes the history of the United States because it becomes on the frontier, a mayor on the frontier of the United States west of the Pacific. Yes. And who he married and who he brought shaped Napa County in terms of its industry. We don't know if he was Jewish, but the pattern was that most founders of towns next to a mission or related to the ranchos was usually a Jewish trader. And it was the way the system developed because at that time in 1846, there was no distinction between Jewish and Lutheran or Catholic. It wasn't an issue. It hadn't become a question of race or origin. People look to help each other on the frontier to work together. So the founding of Napa City as the first Anglo-Saxon community in the West, not founded by the Spanish or the Mexicans, was a very significant expansion of Napa, of the country that you can see in downtown Napa with the layout typical of the Protestant method with the Luther, with the Methodist, and Presbyterian church on third street. That's very Midwest.
Thank you. So. Excuse me, your time is up. We need you to please stop now. Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you. We're on to online public comment. Mr. Michaels, do we have any public comment at this time?
Uh, we do not have a public comment at this time.
Okay. In that case, we will move on to item H, Reports. H one, Board of Education and Student Board Representative. Uh, Student Board Member Gomez, would you like to start?
Yes, of course. Um, so just to touch on the district-wide Wi-Fi upgrade, that was passed two meetings ago. The students that are aware of this are very enthusiastic because the Wi-Fi truly needed an upgrade. And not just students, but teachers as well are happy to see this because I know that I, as a student, have seen class lessons need to be changed or at least tweaked because either the Wi-Fi collapsed for a period of time or it was just too slow for the students to be efficient within a class period. So this was a much-needed upgrade that is pleasing a lot of people throughout the district, um, once it's implemented. And then this past Monday, in my third-period class, I and other students listened to a presentation given by Mona Leonardi, the co-founder of the Michael Leonardi Foundation and mother of Michael Leonardi, who was tragically killed by ingesting what he thought were prescription pills that were sold to him, but were instead pills laced with fentanyl. Mona gave a very touching presentation that was also quite informative, and I hope that every student who has seen the presentation so far was able to grasp something from it. Whether it's the signs of an overdose, what to do if you suspect someone has overdosed, and most importantly, the urgent message to avoid illicit drugs altogether. I'm happy to see the efforts of the district go towards informing students about drug usage and their dangers. And I also learned that Director of Student Services, Mary Ann Christopherson, is making an effort to increase the accessibility of Narcan, which can reverse overdoses to students within the district, which is amazing and something that I think should be readily, readily available to any student that wants to feel prepared if they ever encounter, encounter one of these events. So that's really great to see, and that concludes my report.
Thank you. Trustee Gonzalez-Mars?
Yeah, I am, had the pleasure of conducting a couple of visits to Unido's Middle School. I had not visited the campus um, since the start of its school year. Um, so it brought me back to when we had the big orientation day for some of the parents to, um, well, not orientation, to, to scope the, the facilities, the program and all of that and to see it in its full glory and that it is today. It was just really exciting to be there. I immediately, um, as soon as you walk in, just sense this energy of excitement, collaboration, communication, and just that's the, the, the sense I got with everybody that I spoke with. So I just really wanted to appreciate Principal Arriba for her leadership and an opportunity to, to dive into the programs that is already happening there at Unido. So just, um, really, really great work happening there. And then, um, earlier this week, I did go to Napa High School and, um, and did a tour with Principal Ainsworth. And, um, we started with a good conversation in regards to, to some of the challenges, um, that are faced that are not, um, unknown to us here. Um, and just in particularly, we dove into some newcomer students who don't speak English or Spanish, but a particular dialect um, in Mexico and indigenous, um, areas there. And so um, just the, the, it, it's a small group, but it's something that I've seen grow across the county. Um, and, um, and coincidentally, um, these are kiddos that speak the Mistico language. Um, and Napa County Public Health had done a fair uh, for the Mistico population and they had about two hundred and fifty attendance. So just lots of resources out there, lots of awareness. So we kind of, we talked in particular about that, that was just really close to my heart. And we did a, a, a tour of, um, he asked me what I wanted to visit in the Wellness Center. It was one of the places that we went to. And just, there were already students in there and just the welcoming face and all of that, um, by, by Daisy and just had a really good, um, good time just touring the facilities and, um, and also brought back some memories because I went to some of the classrooms where I used to be taking classes there in English and math as well. So that was pretty fun. So that concludes my report for today.
Thank you, Trustee Hart.
Good evening. Um, welcome to those of you who are joining us either in person or online, um, for our board meeting tonight. Since our last meeting, I attended the board study session on March fifteenth where we had an excellent presentation regarding the proposed educational specifications for indoor and outdoor facilities. Also, this week on Monday, um, I attended the Special Education Community Advisory Committee meeting. And I will explain a little bit more about that in my report shortly. That concludes my report.
Thank you, uh, Trustee Jankowicz.
Um, I attended the coffee with the superintendent at Snow Elementary. I attended, um, with, I will speak for, um, trustee Riser, she's not here. Um, she also attended C S B A Legislative Week with a slumby member, Assembly Member Cecilia Aguilar Curry and Senator Dodd. There was a virtual legislative advocacy opportunity for school board members across Northern California. This is an opportunity to address issues that are front of mind for school board members and their corresponding districts. And, um, I would encourage us to consider our advocacy even at the federal level as we consider advocating for facilities funding. As the last time the Fed funded infrastructure and facilities was nineteen thirty-five. The Association is also advocating for the legislature to remain focused on ensuring successful implementation of the large programs that were undertaken in recent years, such as Transitional Kindergarten, Expanded Learning Opportunities Program, Home-to-School Transportation, and Universal Free School Meals, rather than creating new categorical programs in the year's budget. I attended along with, um, my fellow trustees, the N V U S D Board Study Session for Educational Specifications for Facilities for those community members that did not get an opportunity to view the presentation. I encourage you to do so. There is a link in the family newsletter that just went out. And I think the three takeaways were standardizing the, um, processes to be financially efficient as well as exercising time efficiency and the ability to achieve our intended goal with the least amount of wasted resources. Understand learning trends and their intersection with our facilities and understanding possibilities. So if an opportunity presents itself, we are positioned to leverage that opportunity in order to serve kids. Met with the County Director of Housing and Homelessness, attended the Wellness Conference. We tur- toured on day one. The centers went to Copia to see the film Race to be Human and then listened to a student panel which was exceptionally powerful. It was a powerful example of student voice. Day two, we attended breakout sessions. Um, and from a trustee perspective, I want to let everybody know that N V U S D is truly light years ahead of the majority of districts that attended in our commitment to student mental health. I need to publicly thank and express gratitude to Jennifer Stewart and the Ed Foundation for an excellent conference and their collaborative partnership with N V U S D and all of the Napa County Schools. Um, I attended briefly, um, I had to jump off, but the D E I Inclusion Committee Call. I attended the coffee with superintendent at Northwood Elementary. I attended the Governance and Implementation Work Session with Dr. Masetti. And then lastly, the Virtual Town Hall on Artificial Intelligence hosted by Senator Dodd. I tuned in to see if they would focus on, on AI in the context of education, but the focus was really on data privacy and security, human accuracy and assessment of job markets, algorithm bias, et cetera, et cetera. But I will let trustee Water elaborate as she too attended the town hall. And that concludes my report.
All right, thank you, trustee Chu.
Um, happy spring. I'll start with that. Um, on the tenth of March, I attended the Professional Learning Day. Um, originally, I was going to just stay for lunch and chat with a few teachers, but I heard from trustee Water that the, um, Climate Challenge Talk was fantastic in the morning, so I attended in the afternoon and got to hear really great presentations on empowering students to tackle climate change while teaching literacy, which is wonderful. So thanks to, uh, Jeannie Hilliard from A C H S and Christie Wolf from New Tech and our two student activists, Allison Bengsek and Leona Karesh, um, A C H S and Napa High School students for, um, giving the, for actually giving up their time on a day that they could have been off. Um, but to give us perspective from the students. Um, and on the fourteenth and the twenty-first, I, um, was at the Coffee with the Superintendent at Snow Elementary and also at Northwood. On the fifteenth, um, I had a, we had a couple of trustees and I had the curriculum, um, and Student Support Board Advisory Committee meeting, and I also attended the study session on facilities. Um, related to that, I did a lot of, of community engagement to get, um, community involvement from American Canyon to serve on the, um, Bond Oversight Committee of A two. So hopefully, um, we'll get more, more, uh, applications from the community. Um, on the sixteenth, um, I attended the D I Council Meeting, um, where I heard a really wonderful personal rendition of the Pledge of Allegiance from N V L A students. They, um, asked the question, rightly so, of what does the Pledge of Allegiance mean? And they, and they got to work to really break down what it means and how do you put it in words that, um, their peers would understand. So it was really inspiring that they delve that deeply into honoring our, our, um, country. So we, we got to hear their rendition of, of the Pledge of Allegiance. Um, this morning, I met, I, I actually continued my conversations with Jeannie Hilliard and also, um, Jim Wilson from Napa Climate Now on, uh, M V U S C Energy Usage and some, then we had discussions of ideas of how do you reduce demand and I sent email to, um, Assistant Superintendent Mike Pearson to continue that discussion in the future. And I also listened in on a TK Implementation Update Briefing by Capital Advisors. Um, and, um, I'll end by saying that this weekend I will be with nine, uh, high school students, um, attending the Academic Decathlon State Competition. It's actually part two on Saturday. They have part one already where they took the majority of the test on the eleventh. So I think we're all rooting for them to do well. We are, yes. We are. That concludes my report.
Thank you, trustee Water.
All right, well, it was a busy two weeks. Um, on the tenth, I also went to the, uh, Professional Development. Thank you to everyone who helped put it on. Um, and I did attend the climate change class where, um, uh, American Canyon High School and Napa High School students, you know, spoke. It was very, very good. Um, and then after that, I attended the, um, workshop called Writing Revolution that was put on. One of the presenters was, um, Ms. Kelly Miller, who had presented to us, um, earlier. And I was really happy about this. It's writing across the curriculum and I was particularly pleased to see so many teachers who were not English teachers at the, at this course, um, very, and very engaged. So that, that made me happy. That was a, that was, um, I enjoyed my day down there. And, um, the next day I went over to Tulakay Cemetery for the unveiling of a plaque for Mary Ellen Pleasant. She is considered, um, the, um, really, uh, one of the godmothers, one, one, one of the godparents of the American Civil Rights Movement. She was a contemporary friend and fundraiser to Frederick Douglass and John Brown. And, um, two American Canyon student sisters, um, Matea and Alana Williams. Uh, Matea sang and Alana played her vial and it was a very nice, very nice event and, um, educational and something for, um, our history students to, um, to note. It's in the southwest corner of the, of the cemetery. And then, um, on the, oh, and that night I went to a play and was tickled to see, um, uh, it was August, Osage County. It's going to be tomorrow night. It's going to be this weekend at, um, in, uh, Yountville. And I was, uh, tickled to see, uh, vintage high school student, Kira Tavakali, uh, perform in it. Our students are everywhere. And, um, then I went, on Tuesday, I went to coffee with the superintendent at Snow School. And the next day I went to Snow School and did, um, reading to, uh, read, it was, um, you know, it was basically, it's a, um, a big, a month for, um, children reading. And I went to four different classrooms and was very impressed with the students', um, manners, engagement, attention. And that, that was a lot of fun. And then I also had, um, a curriculum meeting, uh, that day and the facilities meeting that, you know, we attended. Um, and then, uh, I kind of veered off and went to American Canyon Middle School in a combination school board member master gardener phase and taught a worm composting class to some middle schoolers. I'll bet none of you did that. No, you didn't. And, um, I rushed back and got to the, um, Diversity Equity and Inclusion Meeting. And, um, as a, as, I guess I'm an official education bureaucrat now. I was really thrilled that the N V L A teacher checked ed code to make sure it, this was educational for the students to make sure that it is permitted to modify the Pledge of Allegiance to fit your own circumstances. There are all sorts of ways we can pledge ourselves to our country. And, um, that was, and I thought that was really good for the students to, to know that. And, um, the next, let's see, on the twenty-first, I went to Coffee with the Superintendent at Northwood. I also attended the Zoom Town Hall Meeting with Senator Dodd and I had a good time. I sent my suggestion was that, um, everybody should read Frankenstein, pay close attention to Frankenstein because, well, he thought he had a great idea and it didn't work out. Because, I mean, I know that, I know that AI is, is, you know, the wave of the future. In fact, it's like, it's, it's so future, it's already here. And it's the usual, let the horse out of the barn and then start talking about, oh, well, we're going to put some garden nails. It's, and, um, in the meantime, uh, you know, uh, well, it's, I don't know. I mean, people are using it to make deep fakes of the president and write term papers and all that, but I'm sure they'll sort it out. And, um, deep, excuse me, deep fakes of the former president, sorry. And, uh, it was, it was, um, it was an interesting meeting. Uh, you, you did have one, um, advocate for, um, for privacy and, um, moderation, but everybody else seemed pretty enthusiastic about it. And let's see, I think that's kind of it. I'm here today. That's the end of my report.
Well, thank you, trustee Water. All right, so, uh, on the fourteenth, I attended Coffee, uh, with the Superintendent at Snow. And then the fifteenth, I met with State Senator Bill Dodd and Assemblywoman Cecilia Aguilar Curry as part of the C S B A Legislative Action Day. I facilitated both of those meetings and also helped to advocate for the district's needs. Also, on the fifteenth, the Study Session on Facility Standards I attended. And then on the seventeenth, I visited Northwood Elementary and observed their Kith and Ken Assembly. Uh, and then on the eighteenth and nineteenth, both days was the C S B A Board of Directors Meeting. And then on the twenty-first, I also attended Coffee with the Superintendent again at Northwood. And that concludes my report. Uh, now we are on to Board Representative Reports. H two A, Special Education Community Advisory Committee.
Okay, so the Special Education Community Advisory Committee met this past Monday. Um, work on the inclusion awards and the creativity challenge continues. And there is an awards video that is in the works that will be available for distribution soon. It was mentioned that last year's video was quite a hit and actually was distributed statewide as an example of an excellent program. Flyers this month have been distributed, um, which were focused on cerebral palsy. April is Autism Awareness Month, which will be the focus of next month's flyers. We also discussed World Down Syndrome Day, which is recognized this year on March twenty-first. Our local CELPA Director, Jenny Maywald, reported that our local budget allocation plan is currently in the works and will be made available to parents once it's approved by the CELPA Board. She also requested input for the upcoming year's professional development plan as to what topics should be covered. If you have any suggestions, please reach out and I will make sure they are forwarded to her. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Uh, H two B, City of American Canyon Liaison Representatives.
We have not met.
H two C, City of Napa Liaison Representatives.
We have not met. Yeah, we already reported that.
Okay, H two D, Town of Yountville Liaison Representatives. No one can hear you, Maxine.
We have not met.
Uh, H three, Superintendent and Executive Staff.
Great, thank you, President Garcia.
So, good evening, NVUSD trustees, staff and community. I'm grateful for the opportunity to provide the superintendent's report this evening. Since our last board meeting on March 9th, NVUSD has been part of two significant, large scale professional learning opportunities that have been mentioned by the trustees. First, of course, I want to recognize the extraordinary work of the Instructional Services Team for designing an outstanding day of professional development for hundreds of NVUSD staff. I visited various sessions throughout the day and it's always a true gift to observe our teachers from across the district, learning together to improve their pedagogy and practice. I also had the opportunity to observe several groups of, from our classified support employee group who were also able to take advantage of that day. I also want to thank the technology team and the support staff at American Canyon High School for providing the technical support necessary to execute so flawlessly on such a large scale event. Thank you for your hard work. And I also again, want to thank trustees Chu and Water for making the time to attend as well. I know the staff appreciates the presence of board members at events like these, so thank you. I also was so proud, as described by trustee Jankowitz this evening during her report, so proud of the Napa Valley Unified School District last week as our organization shined during the Napa Valley Education Foundation Wellness Conference. I want to recognize and thank Executive Director Jennifer Stewart and her team for doing an extraordinary job of hosting over 300 educators at this event who were focused on how to integrate socio emotional learning and wellness into the educational experience of students. Another shout out to the Instructional Services Division Team. I know Director Sarah Knox and Assistant Superintendent Pat Andrew Jennings have been working for months alongside the Education Foundation to plan the event. The workshops, speakers and student panel elevated the importance of building school districts capacities around cultivating wellness and responding to the mental health needs of our students. I know the conference participants from across the state were extremely impressed on the first day at the tours of the wellness centers at both Vintage and Napa High Schools. They had so many questions about how they could replicate our model in their own districts. It was an honor to speak and open up on the second day of the conference where I was able to address the importance of having board support around key initiative, initiatives and investments like these. I mentioned our board annual priority number four, ensuring access to TK through 12 mental health and wellness resources and socio emotional learning experiences and how priorities established in the boardroom help drive decision making and improvement forward at our schools for our students. I want to thank trustees Riser and Jankowitz for spending time at both of these days during the conference. Your presence was also greatly appreciated. I also had two exciting school visits. I went to Valio High School and Napa High School this last week. I want to thank award winning Principal Cisneros and Dr. Ainsworth for hosting me and providing me insight to the work being done on their two campuses to clearly build relationships and to improve the teaching and learning happening in the classrooms. Lastly, we did have insightful coffee with the superintendent meetings, again, mentioned by many of the trustees at both Snow and Northwood since our last board meeting. The parents always provide such meaningful feedback during these informal gatherings that is really helpful to the work of my team and the work that I lead. I want to thank the trustees who also make the time to attend and hear positive feedback, concerns and questions from the parents. I know we learn a lot from the field in these venues, these spaces create tremendous opportunities for intimate community engagement. So thank you again for your presence there. Trustee Elba Gonzalez-Myres had mentioned Unidos Middle School, having a visit there recently. And speaking of Unidos Middle School, I wanted to recognize that Director Monica Ready, Principal Alejandra Uribe and Assistant Superintendent Pat Andrew Jennings are away and not present at tonight's board meeting because they are at Long Beach at the California Association of Bilingual Educators Annual Conference. And they were selected to present on Unidos Middle School and launching Unidos Middle School as a language and cultural arts integration academy. So I heard their presentation was very well received this morning. And so I'm very proud that they were able to share our learning about strengthening K through 12 dual language immersion pathway. So tonight we have our reports from the assistant superintendents and some substitutes. And we're going to start out with another NVUSD award winning administrator, Assistant Superintendent Dana Page, who was also recognized by AXA as the Region Four Personnel Administrator of the Year.
So take it away, Ms. Page.
Good evening, President Gracia, Board of Trustees, Student Representative Gomez and Dr. Masetti. In the Human Resources Department, we're right on track, starting with staffing and hiring for next school year. All of our sites have their staffing allocations and are piecing together tentative master schedules at secondary and grade level assignments at elementary school. The vacancies that have been identified are being first addressed through the voluntary transfer process. And then we will be looking at our list of temper, currently temporary teachers to see how many we can hire back in permanent positions. We've also, we've seen the first teaching and administrative positions emerge on EdJoin and we had an appointment tonight, as you heard earlier. Interviews are happening, offers are getting made and spots are getting filled. So it's spring has sprung in HR. I had a great time last Saturday at the UC Davis Job Fair with the Principal of Alta Heights, Ted Ward. We talked like nonstop to new credential candidates, including a couple of NVUSD graduates who are ready to come home as teachers and complete the circle of education life. So very excited about that. It reinforced for me what a great resource our current students are in staffing for the future, which was great timing because then this Wednesday I had the opportunity to participate as a speaker at Canyon Oaks Elementary Career Day. And I highlighted careers in education and hopefully engaged and inspired a few future teachers in the audience. So again, hoping that I planted a few seeds that will grow into future educators. Finally, our staff spotlighted, our staff spotlight highlighted Director of Elementary Curriculum Instruction and English Learner Services, Matt Manning. Matt has been with NVUSD for close to 20 years and many trustees know, know Matt very well from his work as a principal and currently as the Director of Instruction. And elementary, and elementary curriculum, it's a long title, Elementary Curriculum Instruction and English Learner Services. And he was an elementary principal prior to that. So it probably comes no surprise what his nominator said about him. Matt is one of the most caring and gracious members of this district I have encountered. He is kind, patient, always willing to take a call or respond to a text and a thought partner through and through. I would second that and invite everyone to read then the staff spotlight and learn a little more about Matt Manning. Just one of our amazing staff members. Thank you. And this concludes my report.
Thank you, Ms. Page. And next, substituting tonight for Assistant Superintendent Andrew Jennings is Director Sarah Knox, not Max, Knox, who will be giving the report for the Instructional Services.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Masetti. Good evening, Board of Trustees, Student Board Member Gomez, President Gracia. Thank you for allowing me to substitute for tonight. So I, I had a couple of, of updates from around the, the wellness conference and then also the PD day. I will keep them very brief because you all have spoken so eloquently about them already. I just wanted to highlight a couple of parts of those days. So for the March 10th Professional Learning Day, NVUSD Bringing the Moss Bloom 2.0 for March, it was our highest attended professional learning day to date. And it was also the highest rated by attendees in terms of session satisfaction and relevance and overall event relevance and satisfaction. So we deeply appreciate our staff's engagement in these days and their feedback, their honest feedback. And we continue, we look forward to continuing to provide this high quality professional development that meets their needs and, and supports their continued professional growth. As trustee Jankowicz mentioned earlier, and, and Dr. Masetti as well, the Ed Foundation's Fourth Annual Napa Valley Wellness Conference last Thursday and Friday was a, was a big success. And all that I can add to what's already been shared about it was that we had several, several contingents from County Office of Ed and, and districts from all over mentioned to us that they had come to previous, the previous wellness conferences prior to the pandemic and had gone back and replicated some of the wellness programming that they, and the wellness center models that they had experienced. And now they had that in their district. And we know that Jennifer Stewart and I were talking today, we know that people are going to have attended this most recent one and go back and then create their own wellness center programming in their district. So it just feels really positive to be able to be a model and a, a trailblazer in that area and to be able to have that work be shared and then spread all around this area. So very positive, positive feedback from, from that event. We are also thrilled to be able to send a contingent of over 40 of our own mental health providers and administrators and a few trustees to that as well. From the Student Services Department, from the Student Services Department, the Student Services Division continues to collaborate with Napa County Public Health to host vaccination clinics on NVUSD school campuses to offer both COVID vaccinations and also a TDAP vaccine as well. Those clinics will be shared on the NVUSD and Napa County Public Health websites. And we just concluded the California Healthy Kids Survey, Students in Grades Five, Seven, Nine and Eleven. Just finished taking that. It's an anonymous assessment as opposed to our strengths and difficulties questionnaire, which is something that we actually use to follow up with individual students. This one is anonymous. And it focuses on student connectedness, learning engagement, attendance, school climate, safety, physical and social emotional wellbeing. So sites use the results of the California Healthy Kids Survey or checks as it's referred to, to analyze trends, set goals and monitor progress. And we also use checks data to develop, monitor and report on many of our grants related to mental health, student services and safety. Lastly, and I, I really can't speak more eloquently on it than, than a board member, student board member Gomez already did. But we did want to spotlight that Vintage High School did host the Leonardodi Foundation, the Michael Leonardi Foundation and his parents, Mr. and Mrs. Leonardodi. And we just wanted to, like I said, I can't say it any better than, than student board member Gomez already did. But we want to continue to provide information, facts and resources to students and their families around fentanyl poisoning and fentanyl awareness as it continues to grow as a concern in both our community and, and nation. So that concludes my report. Thank you so much.
Great job, Director Knox. Thank you. And next we'll have Assistant Superintendent Rob Mangwala, who will provide the report on behalf of the Business Services Division.
Thank you for the opportunity to update the board and the community. The data and assessment team is busy planning for the next year. They are preparing for the summer Aries rollover, confirming students enrolling for next year and working with the enrollment center on configuring Aries for the annual family data confirmation process. The team continues to support sites as they work on LPAC and CASP testing during the busy spring testing season. So again, ready or not, here we come, testing has begun, right? So test scores. So I'm sure we'll start to hear a little bit about the impacts for teachers. So as, as we kind of care up for that. So the technology team is currently working and planning for our summer project schedule, which is a critical time for our department to complete some large network upgrades and other infrastructure improvements. The summer ours is already shaping up to be very busy. So keep an eye out for future communications on the exciting changes in the works. We're also very happy to have a new tech high senior join us for the past few weeks as part of the new tech internship program. We've been showing them the ins and outs of, of technology and how the district technology department works. And we even had a few opportunities to solve some problems and repair some devices together. So it kind of feels nice to have students potentially fix devices that they broke. So it's a little, it's a little, a little payback, Sam. So we can maybe offer that service to others. So anyways. And as always, the tech department continues to offer support to all district students and staff, making sure that issues are addressed promptly. And everyone has what they need to be a tech superstar. The enrollment team continues to focus on enrollment, enrolling students for the 2023 24 school year. The team is coordinating with the data service team to provide current enrollment data to sites to support their preparations for the next school year. Students are continuing to enroll for the current year and our enrollment numbers remain above enrollment projections in certain areas. So I, I don't know if you've noticed an enrollment report, but specifically when you look in the elementary level, they're actually higher than projections. So we, we did have some late enrollment for elementary. It's not the case for the secondary level, but at the elementary level, this is true. We're all, we're also developing a new system to update site principals with weekly enrollment updates beginning next week. Dana Page and I actually spoke about this yesterday. So really excited about this opportunity. And so the way it'll look is we are going to create a system to align our current enrollment to projected enrollment and staffing altogether. And so we will update this weekly. We're going to roll it out to our principals. So essentially what they'll have is they'll have their enrollment projection. They'll have with, with their projected staffing along with a weekly update of what the roll up enrollment is for next year. So what we'll be able to do is we'll be able to watch enrollment kind of march towards that number. We plan to update that weekly and then actually calculate their staffing on a weekly basis. So it brings down the anxiety a little bit for staff. And so staff will look at and say, hey, I'm anticipated to have, let's say 14 teachers at Alta Heights. I'm only at 12. So things like, I need more kids will hopefully come. At other sites, what, what I think this big change is going to help is if a site is already at their enrollment projection, we can start to redirect students a little bit earlier and also redirect students where it would potentially create a combination potential. We're always going to have, going to have combinations in, in, in vibrant within declining enrollment. But if we know about it now, especially at the elementary level where they typically don't change too much, secondary, there's still pretty significant changes. But at the elementary level, if we can start to redirect families a little bit earlier, when we're above a projection, we have the ability potentially to, to reduce some combination classes. And then also better align staffing for next year. So in terms of the work that Dana Page is doing right now in terms of trying to find teachers, it'll better align that work and ensure that we have high quality teachers. The business office has also quickly made the shift from second interim to budget development and will begin the process of meeting with sites and departments to review their budgets next week. This concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Mangwala and Assistant Superintendent Mike Pearson, who oversees operational services is not here this evening. He's celebrating his birthday. So that's wonderful, but we are excited because we do have one of his directors, Justin Binion, who will be providing a presentation on the transportation plan tonight. That concludes staff reports. President Gracia?
Thank you. All right. We will now move on to item I, Approval of Consent Agenda. Background information on these items is provided to the board prior to the meeting. A common motion takes action without discussion on a roll call vote unless discussion of item or items is requested by board members.
A motion to approve.
I'll say.
First by trustee Chu, a second by trustee Jankowitz. Mr. Michaels, do we have any public comment on this item?
We do have public comment. First speaker is Alvin Aaron. Go ahead, please. Speaker, are you there?
Alvin Aaron, can you unmute yourself?
It appears they dropped off and we have no public comment.
Thank you. All right. Ms. Morales, may I get a roll call vote, please?
Yes, trust, our student board member Gomez?
Hi.
Trustee Gracia?
Hi.
Trustee Water?
Hi.
Trustee Chu?
Hi.
Trustee Jankowitz?
Hi.
Trustee Hart?
Hi.
Trustee Gonzalez-Myres?
Hi.
Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. J, Presentation and Discussion Items. J one, General Services. J one A, Introduction of Board Policy 3100 Budget.
President Gracia, I'm going to have Assistant Superintendent Rob Mangwala provide some background around the introduction of this policy.
Is that better?
Yeah.
I think so. Board Policy 3100 recognizes the critical responsibility for adopting a sound budget for each fiscal year. I think so. Board Policy 3100 recognizes that a critical responsibility for adopting a sound budget for each fiscal year. A very important item covered in this policy is our fund balance or reserve, as we refer to it. So we've historically had a district required minimum reserve of seven and a half percent. I know there's years that we haven't hit that number. In the recent past, we have. But tonight's item proposes a new minimum of ten percent for you tonight. Thank you.
And President Gracia, this will follow our typical pattern with policies where we bring them first for introduction and then for action at the subsequent board meeting to the policy committee. Just given timing with board meetings and wanting to put this in place before budget adoption, we had to bring it for introduction here. You'll have an opportunity to discuss it because I believe there is a policy meeting between now and the subsequent board meeting where it'll be taken for action.
Correct.
Great.
Thank you for making that comment, Dr. Masetti. I didn't make that inquiry before, but as I was reviewing it, I knew it had not come to the committee yet.
Yes.
But that makes sense. Thank you.
Thank you.
Trustee Jankowitz?
I do have a comment. I'm in support, I'm in support of the reserve increase, but I would ask that we continue to revisit this and I will explain. Cash reserves, as we know, mitigate the financial impact of major non-reoccurring or unforeseen expenditures on a school district's annual operating budget. We have these reserves for several reasons, managing cash flow, mitigate volatility in funding, address unexpected costs, save for a large expenditure, and obtain higher credit ratings should we need it. But state and Fed actions can also affect school district reserves and having a responsible reserve level can act as a buffer to actions that are beyond our control. The general fund reserve, reserve levels assess our fiscal health and ability to address future priorities and uncertainties and as such, reserves are a component of our fiscal oversight process. Comment, just for context, a common standard and Assistant Superintendent Mangwala has addressed this previous to COVID dollars was between sixteen and eighteen percent. In most districts, that reserve equals about two months of expenditures. So it's common in standard public agencies at seventeen percent on a $250 million budget. That's forty-two million five hundred. That's not where we are at ten percent. So we are suggesting an increase to ten percent, which is twenty-five million out based on that budget for our baseline. So when approximately eighty-four percent of our overall budget is allocated to employee costs, it is important to remain stable. So yes, I strongly support a ten percent minimum cash reserve level and would not be opposed to revisiting this as we go along for higher levels.
Thank you.
And just to, for the record and for the policy committee to be aware, President Gracia knows this, trustee Jankowitz, and I'm getting who the third member of the finance committee is. Trustee Water?
Me.
Yes, trustee Water. This came up as a discussion in finance, the recent finance committee meeting. And so it started there and the the finance committee realized that it needs to go to policy. But again, just the calendar of meetings in relation to budget adoption and development, we had to sort of pace it out this way and sort of not follow our typical process, but it will come to policy. Thank you, finance, for bringing the suggestion forward.
Yeah, this was a specific request on behalf of the finance committee that we increased this from seven and a half to ten percent.
I'm going to stay here because I'm in part of the next item, too.
Do we have any further discussion on this item? Nope.
Okay.
Mr. Michaels, is there any public comment on this item?
There is no public comment on this item.
Thank you. We will now move on to J. Two, Operational Services. J. Two A, MBUSD Annual Transportation Plan.
Good evening. Before Director Justin Binion began the presentation about MBUSD transportation and you vote on our required transportation plan later tonight, I wanted to provide a little background information and connection to the budget because this is actually a budget related issue that we're going to talk about tonight. So as you know, MBUSD has a, has an incredible transportation plan. Thank you very much. I should say program, not plan, but thank you very much. And so this isn't true for all districts. You might not realize this, but many districts have stopped providing home to school transportation since the program is only partially funded. And it was, it's been funded at a fixed historic dollar amount. So it has not increased over time. So that what we do is we contribute to the program via our general fund. So in our, in our case, I did an analysis, we received about forty-three percent of the total cost. So the cost is four million dollars. Eventually, you know, California has at least proposed bringing it up to a hundred percent. That's not on the horizon, given what's going with the budget. But as a part of the twenty-three, twenty-four budget, the state will now reimburse school districts for home to school transportation of about sixty-five percent of expenses. One of the requirements is that we create a transportation plan that engages with different stakeholders and provides transportation to unduplicated students that participate in the program for free. And so for us, this is, it's about a six hundred thousand dollar increase overall. So it's not a, you know, it's significant, right? It's very, it's great to be reimbursed for something that for this program that we offer for students. And with that said, take it away, Justin.
Good evening, President Gracia, Board of Trustees, Dr. Masetti and Student Representative Sam Gomez. I am here tonight to present the transportation plan. I am very excited to be here to share with you a little bit about our department and how we serve the Napa Valley community. Go to the next slide. The Transportation Department serves to support the Napa Valley Unified School District as it strives to achieve their strategic goals. Goal number one, student learning achievement and access. We in the Transportation Department take pride in delivering students on time, safely and ready to thrive socially, emotionally and academically. Goal number four, tactical proactive and efficient management. As Assistant Superintendent Rob Mangwala said, by implementing this transportation plan, the school district plan stands to recoup sixty-five percent of their home to school transportation cost. Next slide, please. I'd like to take this opportunity to share with you the Transportation's mission statement. When I took over as the Director of Transportation almost a year ago, one of the first things I had the opportunity to do was to meet with our team and develop a mission statement that reflected the mission statement of the school district, but also captured what we did on a daily basis. What we came up with was transforming young lives by providing transportation to education. Next slide. I'd like to take this opportunity to give you guys an overview of our transportation team. We are small, but we are mighty. Our transportation team consists of Director of Transportation, myself, two transportation supervisors, one that oversees our general education transportation program, one that oversees our special education program, two clerical staff, three mechanics and thirty schoolless drivers. I am honored to work with such a highly skilled and committed group of professionals. Next slide, please. Transportation, or excuse me, the transportation plan being considered tonight is a result of ED Code three nine eight zero zero point one, which requires us to develop a transportation plan. Noted in the development of the plan, plan has to be developed with various stakeholders. Our particular transportation plan considered tonight was developed with the MBUSD administrators, Napa Valley Transit Authority, MBUSD CSCA and NVVA negotiations teams and the Napa Valley Unified School District students and the MBUSD Data and Assessment Services. Next slide, please. Our Transportation Department consists of thirty-six routes. Twenty-four of those routes are special needs routes which transport approximately two hundred and fifty students daily. Twelve general education routes which transport close to eleven hundred and fifty students daily. We have forty-eight buses in our fleet, thirty-five which are used daily, along with one van. We provide transportation to schools down in Vallejo that service deaf and hard of hearing students. Our extra buses are maintained and serviced on regularly scheduled intervals. And the extra buses are put in place when any of our regular buses are down for mechanical work or bodywork. Next slide. Our general education transportation for secondary includes two high schools and four middle schools. Our students in our general education program are bussed based off of the specific geographical areas which present challenges for students to access their homeschool. General education students are required to fill out a transportation registration form and submit that to our Transportation Department. The schools listed on this slide have the highest participation historically. Next slide. Our elementary general education program consists of seven schools. Once again, busing is based off of geographical areas, most of which present challenges for students to access their homeschools. Students are also required to fill out registration forms and submit them to the Transportation Department. As part of the general education elementary program, we do provide busing to Boys and Girls Club for two sites, both Bel Air and West Park. Next slide, please. Our special is actually two more slides. Our special education transportation program is based off of students who have transportation listed in their IEPs. We strive to provide this transportation in the least restrictive environment possible. Students who are identified that are eligible to use the general education buses, IEP team is convened and they determine whether such an experience would be beneficial to the student. Transportation services for our special education program consist of school buses. In extenuating circumstances, we do use taxi contracted car services. We also provide transportation for our McKinney Vento and foster youth students. This allows the students to maintain at their homeschool when their residential location has changed. Once again, this transportation is provided via school bus, contracted car service or taxi cab. Our unduplicated population that we serve in transportation are students who access our district standard school bus stops. None of our home to school transportation services are at a fee to any of the students. We have an interest in the Napa Valley Unified School District of increasing our home to school transportation. One of the major hurdles that we've encountered in recent years is the school bus driver shortage. There's a national shortage and it has hit close to home for us as well. With staff shortages, it limits the amount of transportation that we are able to offer. We are currently working to hire and train new school buses with understanding that the more staffing we're able to bring on board, the more services that we'll be able to provide to the students in this community. I thank you guys for listening. That is our transportation plan. Yes.
You said in your presentation that we have thirty, currently we employ thirty bus drivers.
Yes.
What is our average? How many bus drivers are we down?
Well, we have thirty-six routes and we have thirty drivers right now. So myself, my transportation supervisors, we've even had our mechanics get licensed to school bus drivers to meet the need on a daily basis. We need to become flush. We need six more drivers to have standbys to cover routes when drivers are out sick. We would need at least ten more drivers.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Hold on. There may be other questions. Mr. Michaels, do we have any public comment on this item?
Yes, we do. Of course, speaker is Sylvia Regalado Zach Claude. Go ahead, please.
Hi, good evening. Thank you so much. I greatly appreciate the opportunity to speak before you with regards to transportation. First of all, I do want to commend the Transportation Department. We as a family were able to take advantage of the pre-pandemic busing and transportation services to the middle school here in the city of American Canyon. And it was beneficial and often, you know, a great way to be able to offset the traffic that we encounter here locally in town. What I'd like to know is, and I know that since the pandemic, you know, you have done an excellent job as best as you can to continue to ensure our student's safety and arrival to school on time. My questions around transportation are, one, in the plan or if in the plan it's not included currently, what consideration is being given to address being able to bring high school students, secondary students from the west side of American Canyon over to the high school to help to again, you know, ensure that students are able to get to school where they're able to be there on time. That's one that, one question that I'd like an answer or I would like to see considered as part of the ongoing transportation planning. And then the second is how does all of this relate to providing transportation for sports at our schools? I know that we've encountered as a family through two participation in a fall and now a spring sport, a shortage of access to busing for our athletes. And so I don't know what that is across the district, but I know that other schools have, and other sports here in town have had to, at our school, have had to rely significantly on parents being able to drive the athletes to the away meets or games or competitions. And that to me, as, as looking at it from a parent's perspective and just beyond that, it, there's an issue of equity with regards to which students are then able to participate fully in our sports programs as a result of maybe having a parent that's able to drive them. Often the students are leaving at, you know, one o'clock in the afternoon, which most parents are at work. And so I'd like to see a more, if it hasn't yet been included, a more robust opportunity to look at how transportation impacts the daily lives and activities of students and can support that for all students to be able to fully participate in the programs that we have available during and after school across the district. Thank you so much.
Thank you. We'll have Dr. Masetti follow up with you later. Mr. Michaels, do we have any further public comment on this item?
There is no further public comment on this item.
I believe trustee Water had something to say.
Yes, I wanted you to pass on to Ms. Soto, your driver, that I had a wonderful time on her route. You know, I was there that morning and met you and I'm sure she's a very kind nurturing person and she's the representative of the school district that the students see first thing in the morning and she knew every name on that, she knew every child's name on that bus and they were all beautifully behaved. And also my compliments to your drivers who are, they and Napa Electric are the only only drivers who stop all the time at the four way stop at Laurel and Jefferson. Just pass that on. Definitely. Yes, they, they pay attention to the stop signs.
Definitely. Thank you.
Trustee Water, when we were on that route together, do you remember that Ms. Soto also said that the reason she was such an exceptional driver is because Mr. Binion trained her?
Yes.
And then he was the best trainer that she could have ever asked for. So she was a
Thank you. Thank you.
And then I just wanted to take a moment to thank you, Director Binion, for tonight's presentation and all the hard work that you've done since taking over the Transportation Department. Dr. Masetti speaks very highly of you in your conversations with us and I think that this is the first time we've heard from you and you did a great job presenting tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right, that moves us on to K. Action Items. K. One, General Services. K. One A, Agreement Between Prospect Studio and Napa Valley Unified School District.
K one A, agreement between Prospect Studio and Napa Valley Unified School District.
Move to approve.
Oh, second.
First by Trustee Chu, second by Trustee Jankowicz. Mr. Michaels, do we have any public comment on this item?
We do not have public comment on this item.
I believe we have some comment from Dr. Masetti.
Yes, so I just wanted to take a moment to orient the board. I've mentioned this in past board meetings, but we are very, very excited about this potential partnership pending board approval tonight. We're excited about partnering with Prospect Studios in order to launch what will be a year-long process of visioning and producing a graduate profile, an adult employee profile, and a system profile alongside a strategic, tactical strategic action plan that will guide our work. We're excited about looking ahead and having strategic foresight to inform us as to how we can better improve the educational outcome for our students. And we're really, really excited because of the approach that Prospect Studio will be orienting us towards and guiding us through, which is a deep, year-long process of community engagement. And so I just want to thank the board in advance, assuming you do vote yes on this tonight. We are very excited about the energy, the time, the investment, the effort that we will be putting into planning for NVUSD's future.
Feels like the opportunity for some deep community engagement is really going to be a pretty exciting piece of this process, and I look forward to seeing the results if we prove it tonight. Okay, we have a first and a second. Student Board Member Gomez. I, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. K one B, Agreement Between Cultural Edge Consulting, Inc. and Napa Valley Unified School District.
Move to approve.
First by Trustee Chu, second by Trustee Hart. Mr. Michaels, do we have any public comment on this item?
There is no public comment on this item.
All right, Student Board Member Gomez.
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. K two, Business Services. K two A, Resolution two-three-dash-two-seven, a resolution of the Board of Education of the Napa Valley Unified School District authorizing the issuance of Napa Valley Unified School District election of twenty-twenty-two General Obligation Bonds Series A, Schools Facilities Improvement District Number Two, American Canyon Area, and actions related thereto.
Move to approve.
First by Trustee Chu, second by Trustee Hart. Mr. Michaels, do I have any public comment on this item?
There is no public comment on this item.
As is a resolution, Ms. Morales, can you give us a roll call vote, please?
Yes, Student Board Member Gomez.
Aye.
Trustee Gracia.
Aye.
Trustee Water.
Aye.
Trustee Chu.
Aye.
Trustee Jankowicz.
Aye.
Trustee Hart.
Aye.
Trustee Gonzalez-Mares.
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you.
All right, Item two B, elevation renewal through twenty-twenty-six, twenty-seven school year.
Move to approve.
First by Trustee Chu, second by Trustee Hart. Mr. Michaels, do we have any public comment on this item?
There is no public comment on this item.
All right, Student Board Member Gomez.
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Item two C, inter-agency agreement to ensure school stability for foster students.
Move to approve.
First by Trustee Chu, second by Trustee Jankowicz. Mr. Michaels, do we have any public comment on this item?
There is no public comment on this item.
Student Board Member Gomez.
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Item K three, Human Resources. K three A, Resolution twenty-three-dash-twenty-eight, classified reduction or discontinuance of particular kinds of service.
Move to approve.
First by Trustee Chu, second by Trustee Hart. Mr. Michaels, do we have any public comment on this item?
There is no public comment on this item.
And as this is a resolution, Ms. Morales, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Yes, Student Board Member Gomez.
Aye.
Trustee Gracia.
Aye.
Trustee Water.
Aye.
Trustee Chu.
Aye.
Trustee Jankowicz. Trustee Jankowicz.
Aye.
Trustee Hart.
Aye.
Trustee Gonzalez-Mares.
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you.
All right, Item three, K three B, Declaration of Need for Fully Qualified Educators twenty-twenty-three, twenty-four.
Move to approve.
First by Trustee Chu, second by Trustee Hart. Mr. Michaels, do we have any public comment on this item?
There is no public comment on this item.
Student Board Member Gomez.
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Motion passes. Item K four, Instructional Services. K four A, Agreement with NVUSD and Burnett Therapeutic Services.
Move to approve.
First by Trustee Chu, second by Trustee Hart. Mr. Michaels, do we have any public comment on these items?
There is no public comment on this item.
Student Board Member Gomez.
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. K five, Operational Services. K five A, Request for Work Agreement with Chef Anne Foundation and Foundation for California Community Colleges.
Move to approve.
First by Trustee Chu, second by Trustee Hart. Mr. Michaels, do we have any public comment on this item?
There is no public comment on this item.
Student Board Member Gomez.
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Item K five B, Request for Contract for Consulting Services with Fries Consulting for twenty-two, twenty, twenty-three, twenty-four.
Move to approve.
First by Trustee Chu, second by Trustee Hart. Mr. Michaels, do we have any public comment on this item?
There is no public comment on this item.
Thank you. Student Board Member Gomez.
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Passes. K five C, NVUSD Annual Transportation Plan.
Move to approve, second.
First by Trustee Chu, second by Trustee Gonzalez-Mares. Mr. Michaels, do we have any public comment on this item?
There is no public comment on this item.
Student Board Member Gomez.
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Item six, K six, School Planning and Construction. K six A, SPC number eighteen-point-eight-five-dash-two-zero, Request for Contract with NV Construction for the Special Education Wing Window Replacement Project.
Move to approve.
First by Trustee Chu, second by Trustee Hart. Mr. Michaels, do we have any public comment on this item?
There is no public comment on this item.
Thank you. Student Board Member Gomez.
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. K six B, SPC number eighteen-point-eight-six-dash-two-three, Request for Roof Evaluation Services by Interactive Resources.
Move to approve.
First by Trustee Chu, second by Trustee Hart. Mr. Michaels, do we have any public comment on this item?
There is no public comment on this item.
Thank you, Mr. Student Board Member Gomez.
Aye.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. K six C, SPC number eighteen-point-eight-seven-dash-two-zero, Request for Contract of Services with KYA Group for Gym Flooring Refinishing.
Move to approve.
First by Trustee Chu, second by Trustee Hart. Mr. Michaels, do we have any public comment on this item?
There is no public comment on this item.
Thank you. Student Board Member Gomez.
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. K six D, SPC number seven-point-eight-dash-two-three, Request for Design Services with CA plus SA Studio to Rehabilitate Portables.
Move to approve.
First by Trustee Chu, second by Trustee Hart. Mr. Michaels, do we have any public comment on this item?
There is no public comment on this item.
Thank you. Student Board Member Gomez.
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. All right, we're now on to Item L, Information. I one, sorry, L one, General Services. Then L one A, the Curriculum and Student Support Committee. Do I have any discussion on this item? There are notes attached. There is apparently no discussion on this item, so we will move on to L one B, Facilities and Technology Committee. There are no notes, so we will move on to L one C, that would be the Finance Committee. There are notes attached. Is there any discussion on this item? No one can hear me.
We mentioned it last time, but the notes were, because we had just met, the notes are attached this time, so it'd be duplicative.
Okay. Then we'll move on to L one D, the Policy Committee. And there are no notes attached, so we will move on. L two is Business Services, L two A, the Enrollment Report. Trustee Jankowicz.
I just have a question. Are, when is the next demographic study scheduled? I believe we discussed it, and I don't recall the date. For the when.
So that's a very good question. So Rob Murray just recently sent me his draft. We're reviewing it right now.
Okay.
And so we'll bring it to the board for adoption and can potentially do a presentation also if you like.
Thank you.
Okay. Any further discussion on that? We will move on then to Item M, Additional Suggestions and Comments from Board Members and Superintendent. Seeing none, we'll move on to Item N, Future Agenda Items. Seeing none, moving on to Item O, Adjournment. I move to adjourn.
Second.
First by myself, second by Trustee Chu. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned.